We're going to call the regular meeting to order. Thank you all for being here and joining us tonight. Uh, we would like to, if you would, stand with us as we do a silent invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the party of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have some recognitions and some proclamations that we are going to do. We are recognizing uh South Valley Symphony's 50th anniversary. And um, do we have someone here for them?
Yeah.
Very good. Let me see if I've got some information to read at the. I'm trying to figure out my spot. Come right up here. We'll, we'll take care of it right up here. All right, we'll come right over here. Okay, so South Valley Symphony here is, first of all, let me give you the proclamation itself.
So much.
And let me read a couple of comments here. For the 2023, 2024 season, South Valley Symphony will be celebrating its 50th anniversary. Roots lie deep in South Santa Clara communities of Gilroy and Morgan Hill and the neighboring communities such as San Benito County. They are, they are a nonprofit volunteer community orchestra dedicated to providing orchestral opportunities for local musicians, educational support, and mentoring to students in music programs in South Bay school districts and performing folk classical and pop concerts annually for the enjoyment and enrichment of audiences of diverse ages and cultures. The city of Morgan Hill would like to congratulate the South County, the South Valley Symphony on their 50th anniversary. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's actually a pleasure to, to be part of the community. Um, and our, we actually have our opening concert this coming Sunday at Gulliama Winery, three o'clock in the afternoon. It's gonna be, well, it's gonna be warm, but it's gonna be a fun program. Um, so we hope that a number of people just come out and, come out and hear us, um, from that perspective. Um, I moved into the area in 2010 and I found South Valley Symphony actually about eight years ago. Um, they have, they elected me board president last year and they insisted I do it again because I didn't do something wrong, I suppose. So, um, I'm just very pleased to accept this recognition. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the proclamation of the October 1st, 2023 as Latino Physicians Day. Latino Physician Day was established on October 1st as a day to celebrate Latino and Latina physicians in the United States who represent only 6% of the physician workforce. This percentage is critically low when the US population is 19% Latino and Latina, highlighting an urgent need for increased representation in the US physician workforce. And by the way, as Doc, I'll make sure I get the name right. Doctor Tiscanero? Just, am I saying it right? Tiscolino, is it, is Doctor here? Is the Doctor here? Is there a Doctor in the house? Let's just start there. All right, well, I'll finish up here. The mission of Latino Physicians Day is further inspired, inspired by historical and existing health disparities disproportionately affecting the Latin, the Latin community, including non-English speaking patients and the undocumented community. Latino Physicians Day will help generate public awareness of the shortage of Latin physicians and inspire young Latin to pursue a career in medicine. So we'll set that aside. All right, our next proclamation will be um, for, this is the, um, wait. October 4th as Clean Air Day. And is Tanya Carruthers here? Hi, Tanya, come on up. Pollution contributes to higher rates of cancer, heart, and lung diseases which adversely affect health. California has some of the most polluted regions in the United States and it is vital that we protect health and wellbeing of our residents, visitors, and workforce. Emissions from chemicals, industry, and other sources significantly affects the natural environment, air quality, and wellbeing of residents, employees, and visitors to the city of Morgan Hill. Education about air quality can rise, can raise community awareness, encourage our community to develop better habits, and improve our community health. Californians will be joining together across the state to center the air on October 4th, 2023. Uh, the city of Morgan Hill is committed to the health of our residents, workforce, and community at large. Here you go. There you go. Thank you. I'm gonna say a few words.
I'm good.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Now, we are declaring October 2023 as dementia and brain health awareness month, and this is going to be Rob, Robin Shepherd, who will be coming up to receive this. Dementia is a growing public health challenge that undermines quality of life for families in Morgan Hill and around the world. Many of the researchers are uh, working hard to unlock the causes and cures for Alzheimer's, Lew Body, and other diseases that cause dementia. The county of Santa Clara and the city of Morgan Hill have earned the age-friendly designation by the World Health Organization, and the county prioritizes dementia support and services as a domain of livability. Susan and Charles Bergoff founded, Foundation has been steadfast in its work to provide dementia and brain health education and resources to Morgan Hill through partnerships with local healthcare, education, government, and nonprofit leaders. The first step is in addressing the dementia challenge. And I think you want to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, to thank the city council, the city staff, uh, the senior, uh, the Morgan Hill Senior Advisory Committee, A U W, and uh, the friends of the community that are all in support of healthy, age-friendly, and dementia-friendly communities out there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here you go. Nice tie.
Thank you. We do have two other items to read, but I can go to my, back to my seat as there, there's no one here to receive these. Uh, this item is proclamation recognizing the festival of Deepavali, if I'm saying that right. Uh, the 2 billion Hindu diaspora worldwide anticipate the festival of Deepavali or Diwali, as known by the Hindu festival of lights. Deepavali is the day of awakening the light of consciousness within, signifying the eradication of darkness and bringing the new light of completion towards a brighter future. The ancient enlightened Hindu civilization gave the world prosperity, progress, scientific advancement, sustainability, and eternal peace. The mission and vision of, ooh, Sri Kailasa is to create this enlightenment, living for all humanity, to recreate the enlightenment of Hindu civilization that used to exist. The enlightenment, the enlightenment Hindu civilization is a must, uh, a super conscious breakthrough for humanity is, um, is must and Kailasa is the only solution, uh, is complimentary to every nation and is supportive of the Hindus in every nation as well. It carries the hope of enlightenment living in every nation. Uh, the last one here is proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, which has already passed, as Constitution Week. September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, uh, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Okay, very good. Uh, now we have a presentation, uh, by Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and I'm excited to welcome Silicon Valley Clean Energy tonight to talk about the Electric Showcase Awards. I would like to ask Councilmember Yvonne Martinez Beltran, who currently serves on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board, uh, to introduce the presentation. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've served on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board since 2019, and I'm proud to be a part of the organization whose mission is to reduce dependence on fossil fuels by providing clean energy and innovative programs for our community. I'm thrilled to have Zoe here from Silicon Valley Clean Energy Staff. Um, she's here tonight to share a little bit more about the Electric Showcase Awards that we've had going on and to congratulate our very own Morgan Hill winner, Alexander Moore.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for having me here. My, my thoughts will be quick, but wow, I get to go to a lot of council meetings and this is one where right away you can feel the spirit and community of Morgan Hill. So what a great meeting to get to be a part of and all, hear all the wonderful things happening, um, here in Morgan Hill. So, uh, good evening. Happy Clean Air Day. Um, as Dr. Martinez Beltran mentioned, I'm Zoe Elizabeth. I'm the Deputy Director of Decarbonization Programs and Policies, which means that I and my team and Greater S V C E, we are here as a resource to all of you council members and community members in Morgan Hill to help make the transition to, uh, clean, healthy homes and communities. We're a local clean and clean electricity provider to Morgan Hill and 12 other communities in Santa Clara County. Um, since our formation, we've helped to reduce over 500 million pounds of, of carbon pollution. And perhaps even more relevant to those in the room, we've also helped our customers save over $4 million um, on electric bills since our formation, just in Morgan Hill, right? Those are just Morgan Hill customers. Um, so we're really proud to serve the community with community program investments to reduce emissions, um, such as rebates up to $8,000, um, currently to transition to home appliances that are all electric and pollution free. And today, I'm, we're delighted to celebrate the Electric Showcase Award winners, um, this evening here in Morgan Hill. And before I introduce Alexander, let's have since his Clean Air Day, quick pop quiz. Does anyone know what emits more NOx pollution than all of the, um, power plants in the state of California? Okay, I'll jump in with the answer, and that is, um, home, uh, small heating appliances. We often don't know of how much kind of NOx emissions and smog forming emissions come out of our homes and buildings. So really fitting that we're here on, on Clean Air Day. Um, so these awards were designed to celebrate members of the community that are taking the first steps towards creating healthier, pollution-efficient, free homes, um, that support their families, but also our community at large. And one of the 16 winners this year is Alexander Moore of Morgan Hill. Alexander will come on up. And after finding multiple gas leaks on his home, Alexander was ready to get gas out of his house. His transition to the, to going all electric included installing solar, an EV charger, induction cook, cooktop, a heat pump HVAC, and the heat pump water heater, which he all installed himself. So clearly the expert in the room, if you've got any questions about making these upgrades, ask Alexander. Um, so congratulations to Alexander. And before our close, we also just would like to invite all of you that are here, um, up on the dais this evening. We're having a special tour on October, October 14th, just for, um, public officials in Santa Clara County, um, who would like to, um, to tour electric homes and those that are transitioning to electric homes. It's a great opportunity. We know that as a state, we're making this transition, but it can often feel, um, out of touch, out of reach. Maybe we have not, haven't seen these appliances. So we are offering a tour for public officials. We'll have lunch and coffee, but most importantly, an opportunity for you to engage with community members and learn more about their experience going electric. October 14th.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just to close, we would love to take a picture with the council, with Alexander.
Come on up. Yes. Why don't he, why doesn't he come up here? We'll all kind of sit in our seats and, that work? If you want to come up behind us for that matter.
Yeah.
We're good either way. Come on up here. Yeah, you can climb over the top here. That's okay. Yeah, we can all stand up with him. So I'll make it easier. All right, come on in. Maybe it would've been easier if we used to go down there. All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, you are. I bet.
Okay, well, thank you for that presentation. We are now going to move on to city council reports. Everybody good? And Councilmember Borzioli will be doing this month's, uh, this meeting's, uh, update.
Uh, are we ready?
Oh, okay. You're good. You're on.
Yeah, I was just trying to help my fellow councilmen over here on, on this. So, Mayor, so I, I, I'm gonna be somewhat brief on some of these because, um, they're really in-depth. So one of the committees I'm on is the largest creek flood control. And, uh, I could tell you that, that project, uh, I was so worried about several years ago when I got on this committee, and it's going so well. We got great people, uh, working, uh, on this, um, from Valley Water and, uh, other agencies. Uh, we got the, uh, representatives from, uh, the Sacramento on this call, and everything is going somewhat smoothly. Um, what I really like about it is, uh, the end result is coming very quickly in 2024, when it's going to be complete, where, uh, hopefully FEMA will release the flood, uh, restrictions in, uh, for, for residents, especially in the downtown area. So they will, uh, no longer be required to get flood insurance, and that's a big savings for our residents. So, uh, the end is in sight. Um, again, great, uh, great agencies working together on that. Uh, the Anderson Dam, uh, again, I'm gonna be brief on that. Uh, federal funding for the continuation of the project is going, uh, very well. There's really no hiccups in this, um, uh, Anderson Dam retrofit. Uh, it's just taking a lot of time. There's a lot, there's like 15 different agencies involved. Uh, and again, we got really, uh, good, good people, uh, on that project. Um, the blasting, the recent blasting went well without incident. I was going to, I was a little bit worried that we're gonna have some residual from that, but, uh, it, it, it went extremely well. Uh, the, uh, I was up, uh, at the Cal Cities Conference, um, in, uh, mid-September. It was a fabulous conference. I always look forward to going. There's so much learning experiences for all of us up there. Um, but I could tell you that there's one, there was one, um, there was one session, it was the very last day, uh, right before the general session, which is the ending. Um, and I chose to go to that. It was called managing difficult conversations with constituents. Um, I took that over the harassment prevention training, which, uh, I was supposed to go to, and our city manager is not happy with me on that, but I, I really, I really, I think made the right decision. It was an eye-opener for me. Um, you know, because it was supposed to help with, uh, difficult conversations with constituents and how to handle those, how to better handle those. And, um, and it went very well. And I, um, what shocked me the most is the about 200 people that were in this session, um, many of them, if not all, were very concerned about the high level of, of concern for safety during some of these, um, interactions with the community. So, uh, that was, that was a pretty shock to me. So, uh, that's it for my, um,
Pretty good. Okay.
Mayor, excuse me. Um, I'm having trouble, so I'm going to have to step out again. Okay.
Okay, okay. Well then, in the meantime, we will go to our city manager's report. Christina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, and my teammates that are here. I guess my first announcement should be that, uh, Mr. Borzioli will be reporting to Saturday School, uh, because of his lack of training. Tuesday evening school, excuse me. All right, so a few updates for you this evening. Um, the first is something that's been in the works for a while that we're really, really excited about. This was introduced in our most recent 411, which is our weekly newsletter. Crosskyone Public Services Director and his team worked very arduously on this, and this is, it's a new app, and it's called See, Click, Fix. Something that you can get on, you know, both, uh, Android phones as well as iPhones. It's a way to report in maintenance issues. So anything along the lines of seeing graffiti around town or something that needs to be fixed. Maybe it's a street light that's out. You download the app. You can use your phone's GPS system to get the location. You could put comments in. It allows for us to bring all those, all those requests together and respond. The next item, which you already heard about, is Clean Air Week, and that runs all the way from a few days ago, October 2nd through the 8th. Our website has several activities, uh, for each day, so check that out and figure out how to get involved. And then, um, in the recreation area, really excited to announce, um, that we are with our Parks and Recreation, uh, team, doing a new spooky tradition. You may have seen Morgan Hill Haunt, and so it's an opportunity for neighbors to get excited about the Halloween season and decorate their homes. And so the deadline is October 20th, and I believe we already have lots of entries on that. Um, and there will be judging, so that should be lots of fun. And then lastly, we have our Global Groove Experience, and so that's with our Library Cultural and Arts Commission. And that is going to be this Sunday from 3:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and so it's celebrating our mosaic of cultures. And so more information is available on our website, but that's going to be at our Community and Cultural Center. They'll have music and dance performances, educational demonstrations, as well as fusion food trucks. And with that, I conclude my report.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just prior to this meeting, the council met in closed session on one item involving labor negotiations. There is no reportable action. Um, and a reminder to council members, um, all of you who went to the, uh, league conference last month, um, and haven't yet reported on it, um, if you want to do a 15-second update on the conference and the fact that you went and something you did there, um, that's what's required now under the new, um, reform act laws.
Yeah, well, I think that will answer my next question. Are there any other reports by other council members? We'll start with Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, like, like my colleagues, I, I went to Sacramento too. It was, uh, in another very interesting, uh, conference, uh, um, Wednesday through Friday, and, yeah, a lot of networking happening too, as you can imagine, when council members and mayors from across California come together. Uh, you know, the first year I went, I felt alone. I didn't know anyone. Uh, and now it's a big hot fest when you go, I guess you see your colleagues and, and, and you, uh, and, and despite all the differences we have on this council too, I must say I'm happy to be part of this council. When you hear stories of other councils, thank you, no thank you. Uh, this, this is a council that is fairly civil and, and this, that can argue, but also, uh, can come to, can, can, can go out for dinners together as well. And, and I think to some of us, that is very important, and I want the community to know that as well. I learned a lot again. I took a lot of new ideas back, and some of them, uh, city manager already has heard, and I asked other others to look into, uh, what else can we do here in Morgan Hills to improve our city and to take it up to the next level? I know that was more than 15 seconds. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Levers?
Yes, I was there as well and attended many sessions and learned different things, which was, uh, very exciting and also very informative. But probably the highlight for me was years ago, when I was on council, I was a founding member of the Women's Caucus. So I went to their event, uh, after the conference in the evening, and I was able to speak about how we formed that with probably five women. And now there was a room full, and it was really fun to see a lot of people engaged in a women's caucus and to see old friends. Some of those five people are still involved, so that was very rewarding for me. I enjoyed my time immensely. The conference, annual conference every year is very worthwhile. I think for everybody takes away different things, and the sessions are always very informative.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, uh, Martinez Beltran?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to thank you. I've been in the Women's Caucus, and that's fantastic. I didn't know that. Um, I was in Sacramento on Wednesday. We had our Latino Caucus Business Meeting. I was elected to their executive board. Um, and then on Thursday, we had a panel that I moderated on building in economically challenging times, and it was very interesting to talk about P3s, public-private partnerships, and how people are getting interesting things done by, by working with pu- public and private sector. Um, and then the next morning, I, I was also elected to the Cal Cities, um, Peninsula Division Board. So I'll be on their executive board this year, and that was very exciting. And one of the highlights was hearing Brandon Fleming, who came to speak. He's the author of Miseducated, or, yeah, Mi- Miss, Miseducated, is that right? I think it's Miseducated. Yes, Miseducated, a memoir. And, uh, he was very motivating and inspiring and, and basically asking us to do more as public servants and lead with compassion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I was at that conference and enjoyed the different opportunities to learn, but I think most importantly, the networking side of that, like, uh, Councilmember Spring mentioned, is, is, uh, is, is always good. I have several other announcements I'd like to make as well. One of them is, if you have not read or heard yet, the Bay Area Panthers have decided to stay local. We've got a, a football there, yep. That is this year's quarterback standing up there with the ball there. So that is actually, uh, with a team photographer, so. So we're glad to have you here tonight. But the Barry Panthers will remain in San Jose. They'll be playing at the SAP Center and they'll remain headquartered here in Morgan Hill, which means they'll be practicing at our outdoor sports center. So we're glad to have them. And part of what we did in order to try to work with the team as they were considering a move, we have put together a little friendly competition between myself and the mayor of San Jose, where we will be, we're also putting on a youth football clinic where on Saturday, November 4th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Spartan Stadium. And so we're hoping to get 250 to 300 youth there. And then I'm going to challenge the mayor of San Jose to a football toss. So we'll have some fun with that. But part of that competition too, is we're, we're trying to see how many, how many season tickets can be sold for the, for the team. So we'll be, you'll learn more about that as we get closer. I do notice that we have a number of youth here, high school students in the audience. And I just want to just check in with them. You, most of you have to be here for an hour. Is that correct? Or is it two hours? One hour. So what we'll do in order, so we don't keep you much longer and, and the need be, at around seven o'clock, as close to seven as we can, we'll take a break. Probably a 10 minute break so you can come up and get your, your form signed. And then you're welcome to stay if you like, but you're, you can go if you want as well. So we'll, we'll take that break around seven o'clock. So we're going to move to public comment. The opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to the item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. The comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for a certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item appearing on a post on the, not, not appearing, I'm sorry, not a posting on the, appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comments are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. Are there any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, and I'm having a little trouble with my timer on Zoom. Can, or on a Blue Sky timer. Can you see the timer on your, your setting? Your little keypad at your dais. If you go to timer, can you see the timer there if I start it?
I see remaining time. But I don't, I do see three minutes. Yeah, okay.
Start it. Are you okay if we watch the timer that way?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
So I do have Kathy Chavez Napoli.
Kathy?
Good evening. Oh, things moving. I did pass out a little brochure for you, just to give you some information. Because I like to share information about the Native American community, because I find that most people aren't really aware of it. So if I could just point out that Native American women are 10 times more likely to be murdered or kidnapped than any other women in our community. And unfortunately, California is one of the states that has the highest rate of murders and missing indigenous women. I'd like to first read a land acknowledgement statement and tell you what the land acknowledgement statement really means. A land acknowledgement statement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this land and the enduring relationship that exists between indigenous people and their traditional territories. We acknowledge the Amamutsan, who are the traditional stewards of the land on which we work and live, and recognize their continuing connection to the land, water and air that the city of Morgan Hill sits on. We pay respect to the Amamutsan and to their elders, past, present and emerging. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, the ties of the Amamutsan have to their, have to their traditional homelands are renewed and reaffirmed. And then I would just share a little bit more. And I think it's really important for people to know, because when I go to third grades and I talk to the students, they're always surprised that there are still Native Americans alive. So I think that they don't understand that you are Native American if you are from North America, Canada, Central America, Alaska, Mexico and South America. We are all Native Americans.
Kathy, real quick, about a minute left. I want to make sure you have enough time for the statement as well.
I did read it already at the beginning.
Very good.
All right. And so I'd like to share a person having origins in any of the original people, are the original peoples of North and South America, including Central American, and who maintain tribal affiliations and community attachment. I think it's important because for most people, Native Americans are not really thought of. My grandmother was sent to a boarding school when she was 10 and her language, her culture, her heritage was forced away from her. And she could not wear her own clothing. She was forced to get her haircut and she wore a uniform. You've seen where many graves of Native American children have been found in all the boarding schools. And so I support the proclamation that you are going to be reviewing. But I want to make sure that you understand it's a start. I hope to see one day that the council reads a land acknowledgement statement here to acknowledge the people who've been here for over 10,000 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Excuse me, one second. Very good. Okay, anybody else? I'm sorry about that. Anybody else? Public comment?
Yes, I have some members on Zoom. I have a Tom.
Okay, Tom?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So I'd like to read a quote from a book by the author, Dr. William Luther Pierce. The views expressed in this quote are not mine. I'm just reading them. So it starts, chapter 23, August 1st, 1993. Today has been the day of the rope, a grim and bloody day, but an unavoidable night. For the first time in weeks, it is quiet and totally peaceful throughout all of Southern California. But the night is filled with silent horrors. From tens of thousands of lamp posts, power poles and trees throughout this vast metropolitan area, the grisly forms hang in the lighted area. One sees them everywhere, even the street signs at intersections have been pressed into service. At practically every corner, practically every corner I passed this evening on my way to HQ, there was a dangling corpse, four at every intersection. The politicians, the lawyers, the businessmen, the TV newscasters, the newspaper reporters, the editors, the judges, the teachers, the school officials, officials, the civic leaders, the bureaucrats, the preachers and all others who, for reasons of career or status or votes or whatever, helped promote or implement the system's racial programs. The system had already paid them their 30 pieces of silver. Today, we paid them.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. We appreciate that. There another caller?
Yes, we have Leonard.
Let me, let me, real quickly, how many? We have four?
Three, three announced.
Three, okay. Very good.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My name is Leonard. And tonight I would like to read some verses out of the Talmud. It's the Jewish holy book that is found in every synagogue in America and across the world. They all have a copy of the Talmud. And let's start with Yebamoth 98A. The Talmud states that all non-Jew children are animals. In San Hadron 57A, the Talmud states, when a Jew murders a non-Jew, there will be no death penalty. And Ketaboth 11B, a man who engages in intercourse with a girl of less than three years of age has done nothing, according to the Talmud. Shabbath 116A, a Jew must destroy books of the Christians, the New Testament as an example. And Baba Metzia 114B, the non-Jews are not humans, they are beasts. In Zohar, Oldoth Noah 63B, when Messiah comes, every Jew will have 2,800 slaves. In Gittin 57A, Jesus is in hell being boiled in hot excrement. And Baba Kama 113A, Jews may use lies and subterfuges to circumvent the non-Jews. In San Hadron 57A, what a Jew steals from a non-Jew, he may keep. San Hadron 58B, if a non-Jew hits a Jew, he must be killed. Jalkat Rubenai Gadal 12B, the souls of non-Jews come from impure spirits and are called pigs. Yalkat 245, humiliation of the Christians is unnecessary. Zohar 1168, the Jew must try to deceive Christians. And lastly, Lieber David 37, the Talmud states to communicate, to communicate anything to a non-Jew about our religious relations would be the equal of the killing of all Jews. For if the non-Jew knew what we would teach about them, they would kill us open. Thank you.
Is there anyone out there? We are now going to be. Okay, who else? Who else?
Yes, Leonard?
Leonard just spoke. Is this another Leonard?
Well, while, while the clerk is looking for.
Let's keep them on hold for now.
Okay.
While the clerk is looking that up, I want to just point out, you know, the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States gives people the right to free speech and the right to petition their representatives for redress of grievances, no matter how awful those grievances may be and how reprehensible their comments are, they have a right to make them. But at Morgan Hill, our city council has constantly affirmed the city as an inclusive community and one that welcomes people of all faiths and beliefs. And the comments that we're hearing don't reflect the views of the city of Morgan Hill.
And Don, as the city attorney, is it okay for me to make the announcement that what we are hearing as a, as a council and as a, as a community here, that this is a, an organized effort that we're seeing all across the state by a group who is somehow feeling that they need to make these racially charged comments at council meetings. And while we don't like it, because of what you just described, we have to allow it to a certain extent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
Question, at what point are we able, I mean, to declare that this is provocative and hostile?
We're going to, we're going to turn to Don for that. And so because, again, because it's a legal matter and because, you know, we, we're walking a fine line here. Our city attorney will determine when that line has been crossed.
Right. And I'm going to ask that you look at some of these statements, because I would say that we've already got beyond being.
That again, will be left to the city attorney to make that call. Don, you ready? Okay, our next caller?
We have Lev.
What is the name? I'm sorry. Lev. All right.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Please go ahead.
Good evening. First, I would like to start by pushing back on Kathy a little bit. It was the white Salutrians that were here 10,000 years ago. And I would also like to tell the council, I appreciate you guys honoring the First Amendment and letting people speak. Because what the problem is, is we, there's a Jewish conspiracy in America. And I can prove it to you. All the information that I have can be found at GTVflyers.com. You can watch, you can go to WatchDefiant.com or WatchEuropa.com to see more. But six Jewish corporations own 96% of the media. And every single aspect of the COVID agenda is Jewish. The CDC Director Rochelle Walensky, Jewish. CDC Deputy Director Anne Schuchat, Jewish. CDC Chief of Staff Sherry Berger, Jewish. CDC Chief Medical Officer Mitchell Wolf, Jewish. CDC Director, Washington Office Jeff Rexick, Jewish. COVID Czar Jeff Zeitz, Jewish. COVID Senior Advisor Andy Slavitt, Jewish. HHS Assistant Health Secretary Rachel Levine, transgender Jewish. Head of Pfizer Albert Borla, Jewish. Pfizer Chief Scientist Michael Dolstein, Jewish. Moderna CEO Stefan Banke is a Shabbos Goy. Moderna Chief Scientist Tal Zax, Jewish. BlackRock CEO Larry Fink, Jewish. BlackRock President Rob Capito, Jewish. Vanguard CEO Mortimer Buckley, Shabbos Goy. Pearlman School of Medicine Drew Weissman, Jewish. Chief, I mean, are you guys getting the picture here? 96% of the media is owned by Jews and the Jews are pushing the COVID agenda. The corporations that they own are Columbia Pictures, Sony Pictures. TriStar.
Lev, thank you for your comments. We're going to, we are going to now move on to our next caller.
We're tired of shit. We're tired.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next caller. Thank you. If you'll go ahead and cut Lev off. We're now going to change the timeframe to one minute for the remaining callers. Who's next?
We have Gabe.
The timer has started.
Hello, Councilor Gabe Stutman here with the Jewish SF. Thank you for that statement on inclusivity. With that, I'd just like to read a few random facts about the LGBTQ M A P plus community. Between 24 and 90% of lesbians report being psychologically abused by their partners. Gay men are 60 times more likely to have HIV than straight men. One quarter of gay men in America have had over 1,000 sex partners. 43% of gay men have over 500 partners. Up to 50% of lesbians have reported sexual abuse. 79% of homosexual men say over half of their sex partners are strangers. 99.8% of lesbian, gay and bisexual teens will change their sexual orientation within 13 years. One in eight gay men in London has HIV. Gay men who are 1.65% of this US population account for 63% of the country's syphilis cases.
Okay, Gabe, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to our next caller. Nothing got stranger than that. How many, how many callers do we have left? One more. All right.
No.
Well, that's, that's the other thing we can do. If these are, these are callers adding on as we go, we're going to limit that to those who signed up just prior to this particular item. The three that are on the line now, did they, were they signed up initially or did they just add here recently? It sounded like they just added recently.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move on. We're not going to go through those three callers. But thank you. We appreciate you calling in and well, actually, we don't appreciate you calling in. I'll just be honest with you. I think it's disgusting. And I need to move on to the next item. Are there any other? We have no, no other. Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor, can I just jump in really quick? I, I was trying to pull it up, but I'm just going to speak from the heart rather than from my computer on the resolution. Your council here and now and in the past has adopted and followed a resolution. It's all about inclusiveness and non-hatred, non-violence. And as our mayor has said and our, as our city attorney has said, what you just heard now is happening across the US, if not broader than that. We just got back from a conference hearing from a lot of different cities and it's very unfortunate. And what we heard does not reflect the views of this council, our team. And I do apologize on behalf of the council and my teammates that are here. It is not okay. And it's unfortunately, this balance of freedom of speech. But with that said, we're going to carry on and hopefully we can avoid this in the future.
Thank you.
Can I? Uh, yeah, I've been having technical problems here, as you probably noticed, everyone jumping around trying to help me. I do have it up now, however, it is not in the correct order. So I might need just a few minutes to find what we're on. Okay, because it starts out with 12 and then it jumps into five, so.
Okay, very good. We'll work you along the process here. So we are going to adopt the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as posted? I guess, so moved by Councilmember Borziale, second by.
I want to ask for a change in order.
Okay, very good. Yes.
Which I advised prior, but I'd like to ask to move 12 first, because there's a number of people who would like to touch that.
Sure. I don't see, is the council okay with that? Not a problem? I, where are we going to move it to? We're going to move it in place of, we're just going to move number 11 and number 12. Oh, that's fine. Yeah, okay, yeah. Exactly. So we will, we will accept that. So the motion.
I still stand with the motion.
Second, second by Councilmember Spring. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's none. Passes 5-0. Now for the consent calendar, if there are no council members or members of the public wishing to pull that item, the consent, of the consent calendar, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Motion to approve, motion to approve by Councilmember Borziale, second, second by Councilmember Spring. All in favor? Aye, aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. That passes 5-0.
Mayor, we did have somebody that wanted to speak on an item on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay, forgive me. Oh, come on up, please.
Come on.
Which item are we? Is, is the consent.
Item, item number one.
Uh we, we didn't offer the public an opportunity to poll, so they'll revisit.
Okay, got it. My apologies.
Should I be doing this later?
No, you can do it right now.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, esteemed council members, city officials and everyone here today. I'm just here today in support of the resolution that holds profound significance both for our city and for our nation. Uh we're in support of the resolution designating second Mondays in October as Indigenous Day. Indigenous Peoples' Day in our city. Uh this important resolution represents a step towards acknowledging and honoring the rich history, culture. And contributions of indigenous peoples who have inhabited this land for immemorable generations. Recognizers that long before our city was founded, indigenous communities thrived and nurtured a deep connection. With the land that is now our home and uh. It's so wonderful that we are going to honor and remember them, uh even as they live among us. We are demonstrating our commitment to truth and reconciliation, seeking to acknowledge the historical injustices. That indigenous communities have endured for centuries. This is an opportunity to confront uncomfortable truths of the past and reflect on the hardships faced by our indigenous peoples. Let us commit ourselves to a more inclusive and equitable future and towards living together in harmony. Certainly not what we heard just now, which was profoundly disturbing. Indigenous Day allows us to learn from indigenous traditions, wisdom and knowledge, which have always been buried into the fabric of our city and our nation. Uh recognizing this day, we honor their resolution, their resilience, strength and enduring cultural contributions of indigenous communities. I just wanted to say thank you for putting this um on the consent calendar and I hope it'll pass. Thank you so much.
Well, I think you got your wish. Yes, Don, how do you want to handle that? My apologies, I didn't go to public comment.
Um I, I don't know if there's any other public comment on the item. I, I think. The question would be if anybody in the council wants to uh make a motion for reconsideration, which I doubt.
Yeah, I think we're.
But are there, were there other speakers?
Any comments on that item?
No.
Okay, in that case, I think we've um since it's already passed.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Suman. We appreciate your comment on that. We will then go to other businesses. This would be, we are now moving, so we're gonna go to item twelve first. And then to item eleven. This is to approve or deny community funding request for uh Dia de los Muertos. And the Holiday Posada events. Who is presenting on that?
Excuse me, I don't have item twelve. I have the supplement only.
Okay, here, let me give you my.
Thank you. That's okay.
Let's go right ahead. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Chris Keone, Public Services Director. Um tonight, we are bringing forward a community of funding requests from uh Nueva Esperanza and the Sentinels. Um soccer club to uh fund the annual Holiday Posada event and Dia de los Muertos event. Um the, these events have been hosted in the past and received community funding in the past. Um two years ago, the council adopted a policy on community funding. And that is to um with the intent to receive most of the applications for community funding in March ahead of the budget cycle. Which we did this year, um and then approved community funding um for several events at that time. When we wrote the policy, we also included a provision that a council member could bring forward events anytime during the year. Um and that provision was wrapped in there to allow for unforeseen events, things that come up that could happen. Um after the funding was um provided through the budget process. With that said, the, the policy does uh require that ninety days and that submission of those requests happen ninety days. Ahead of the events. Um with this submission, um one of the events, the Posada event is um over ninety days. From the submission and one is less, the Dia de los Muertos event is less than ninety days. Council member uh which is Beltran brought these, brought these forward. Um and requested the city manager bring them to the council, which is allowed under the policy. That concludes my staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Actually, it is not, according to the policy, it is not allowed. Adding less than ninety days, requests received after the deadline shall not be accepted by city staff.
Correct.
Well, first of all, thank you for that presentation.
Yes, we received a request for translation and so I'm just checking in. I'm gonna ask um assistant city manager Edith Ramirez to come forward and. In Spanish, ask if there is a need for translation either from English to Spanish or Spanish to English.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to?
I will just ask.
Sure.
Question and then we can go from there.
Okay, I will uh look to the council. Any questions by the council?
Council member Spring. Uh uh thank, thank you, man. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. Quick question, the, you know, both these events are not new. They, they've have happened a few years now. Right? The, the, so the. Okay, so I'm, this is.
Trying to.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. But that, that group was calling back again.
I'm sorry, sorry, this is, this is very distracting, the, the noise over there. Uh um so, when, when you start the process, do you go and reach out to? Everyone who has received funding the previous year and has had an event?
Yes.
And, and they, despite that, they, they didn't submit anything?
That's correct.
Okay. Do I don't know if someone from that group is here, I'd like to understand what happened there. Uh um thank you, that answered my question.
Let me ask real quickly, is there a representative from that group here tonight? That appears to be.
Yes.
Please come on up. Yeah, thank you. The microphone.
Yep.
Um Mayor, uh my name is Delia Gomez and I am from Nueva Esperanza. And I am here for, ask for your support, will help to make this uh event possible for our community. And the how, the council member Christina said, um. The people who are very exciting waiting for Halloween also is the similar event for um our Latino community. Who once really like to have this event.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, please forgive me for interrupting. I was just wanted to make sure that you were available. All this is, we're still, we still have council questions and I want you to be available to uh to answer any questions that we might have. We'll allow you, we'll allow you to make that statement that you have prepared uh when we get to the public comment period, so. Yeah, and uh council member Spring does have a question.
Okay.
Uh uh thank, thank you, Mrs. Comment, Gomez for, for being here. I, I'm just wondering, uh uh Mr. Keone says the city reached out. To Nueva Esperanza uh asking whether you'd be interested in funding again. And, and, and assuming, and I have to assume that statement is true, that the city didn't get the request on time.
Yeah.
Why, why didn't you submit it on time?
Well, there are a, a few things happening, um a few other members. Because we are leaders, we are um, we are like a leadership, we are volunteers to doing this event. But things happen, so for few peoples, we, they need to go to Mexico. Like, for example, in my, my, my person, my personal, I have a, I went. I go into Mexico for almost two months. And we really missed the deadline to submit the, the petition. But in another members also that are not here and one of the member has um had a father pass away. So was a little difficult for us to submit the petition on time. But I don't know, it is possible or you can have a mind to help us.
Thank you, I understand uh uh sorry to hear what happened, but I just, I, I have to answer to my question, thank you. And just to, to clarify, the applicant in this case, because under the policy, we, it has to be a. Of double one C three, so the applicant is actually the, the Sentinel Soccer Club. Um they're the ones who's the, who the request would, would go to.
Okay, and you, you are with. I'm sorry, you.
Yeah, I am a part of Nueva Esperanza.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're helping us with the Sentinel Club.
So, so Nueva Esperanza is a group of individuals. Uh the Sentinel Soccer Club is a formal nonprofit that does work here. So Nueva Esperanza has partnered with the Sentinels to.
Is there, is there anyone from the Sentinels here?
No.
No. Okay, but any other questions by the council, council member uh? Why do I have trouble with you every, every week? Council member Levers.
She's intimidating.
She's, she does intimidate me.
I'm intimidated tonight with this. Um I do have a couple of questions. Thank you for coming tonight. Um you, actually, on one of that New Hope, that one, uh where will that be held?
Well, we help um like uh when they uh start advising about the COVID. We are helping over there when the, to bring uh, to help the. Get people by, by saying for COVID. Um we are doing another, another things like giving information of how they can get the help. In the community, for the Latino especially because Latino community is really hard to. To bring or, or they doesn't know where uh they need. Or when, if they need any, any help, they just doesn't know and we try to. To, to talk about what things happen in the community like uh now. Uh I am here because some of my, my, my um, how to say, my. They are not able to come, so and it's hard for them.
Yeah, I don't think you understood my question. I wanna know physically, where will this event be?
Oh, where is the event happening? The, this event happening in the, in the Cultural Center, Monterey and Dunn.
The Cultural Center?
Yeah, and this is the third, third year we're doing that.
Okay, so the funds you asked for, the money you asked for, does that include the rent?
Yeah, include the renting, yeah.
Yes, and, okay, and then the, I, I noticed the other event is at the corner of Monterey.
It's at the Cultural Center. So the altar, it, the event itself for the Dia de los Muertos is at the Community Cultural Center. And the altar that is part of it is on the corner of Monterey and Dunn. And on the Cultural Center by the sign, by the marquee sign.
And how long does that stay up? That, the altar they built.
Three days? Three days, something?
Twenty days.
Okay, okay, good, good. Okay, now, I also understand it doesn't cost anything to attend these, right? It's free?
Um, no, the event is free because we want to the. Uh community Latino, they can have something free for.
Okay.
For the community.
So you're asking for money upfront first.
Yes.
How do you plan to pay us back if you have no charge to the public?
Well, and the, and the.
This is not a loan.
No.
This is a, yeah, this is a grant.
Oh, yeah, it's like. Oh, okay, cuz in here I read that they would try to pay us back or something. Okay, alrighty, um. Uh that's it for right now. I might have another question.
Okay, any other council member Borzioli? Uh thank you, Mayor. Um so, um I, I understand. Um this was brought to us about three years ago and I was on the council then. Uh but if this event is really important to the community and goes on every year. Um I, I personally don't understand why um. The funding wasn't requested in March when uh that's the requirement and the compliance with funding. I, I, I understand what you're saying, but um. Three years in a row, uh this same thing has happened. So uh don't you have a, a representative from your organization, even if you go to Mexico for a death? Don't you have a, a representative here to in the application in March?
Yeah, well, the one I said, our Latino community is really like, I don't know, scared a little bit. And we need to try to, to look who wants to do it and um and the one I said. That some of the one people who are, who want to do it or doing that. Is not able to do it because they are not here and, and things happen, so that's why. So, and, and we're really sorry for that, but. There's something the one is, I don't know, something happened and they, we really miss the, they, the.
Okay, so um uh uh two, um uh three years ago, when I was on the council with uh the previous mayor. Again, this was brought to us, uh but we didn't have this new policy. Where the council member initiated event and free wherever you request. So this, this is new. Uh and three years ago, we didn't have that and we approved, we approved you. But three years ago, I don't believe the soccer was with. Uh the organization like it is today.
Take an answer that it wasn't required at that time until we updated the policy. When we updated the policy in twenty twenty-one, which covered last year and this year. But the council require, um we developed the, the policy, we worked with the council to do that. You all decided that it would be required that the organization, a nonprofit. So that happened after the first year they applied.
Okay, so is um, and, and help me out and I apologize, Dia de los Muertos a nonprofit?
That is an event, the Dia de los Muertos and the um. The nonprofit is the Sentinel Soccer Club that Nueva Esperanza has been working under.
So uh to the city attorney, um shouldn't. They be listed in the Sentinel in the articles as part of the nonprofit?
Well, Sentinel, the Sentinel Soccer Club is the nonprofit. That's the applicant that, that um, Nueva Esperanza, we can't. One of the reasons that we had adopted that we didn't have a policy. It said that the funds had to go to a nonprofit, but it um causes some concerns when money is given to. Uh city funds are given to individuals. Um so, so council. Adopted the policy that the funds have to go to a nonprofit. That nonprofit is, is the sentence. And if I can just add, all of our contracts at the community center releases liability waivers. And the dollars payments run through the Sentinel Soccer Club, the actual entity.
Well, but that wasn't the case three years ago.
That's correct.
So they, they, because they're not a nonprofit, they went and befriended a nonprofit so they can. Put on this event as opposed to forming a nonprofit organization for their group.
And that, that was the case last year. Last year, they, they, they partnered with the Grange as the nonprofit applicant.
Right. Yeah, so is, is that, is that one legal way on how to get around? By not being a, a nonprofit to become a nonprofit?
Yeah, certainly, if Nueva Esperanza was a nonprofit, then we wouldn't be talking about the Sentinels. Um uh I think that that is, you know, we. Last year, when they partnered with the Grange, we, that was the council's decision was to give the funds to the Grange. As to, and so we wouldn't write a check to Nueva Esperanza because it's not a. They don't have a bank account. We would write the check to the Sentinel Soccer Club and they would host the event um in coordination with Nueva Esperanza.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Locken. Uh so why is the event expenses so high compared to? I, I believe there's uh three hundred that participate um in the event. Um and um the expenses are, are pretty high.
I can't speak for all the expenses. I think the, the um. The expenses outside, but the, the, the room rentals at the. the expenses outside, but the 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 room rentals at the CCC are between two and three thousand dollars for a banquet hall. Um you know, event on a weekend. That that's a portion of it.
We're giving them approximately seventy five to eight thousand dollars for it.
So the first part of the funds would be offset for the fee waivers, they wouldn't they wouldn't get the check for the entire amount. Check would be for what is above the actual cost of renting the CCC. The fee waiver comes first and then the dollars to fund it comes second. And uh Debbie, I may be able to uh explain the second part of that question, I just wanted to make sure understood that the first part of the dollars go towards uh facility rental.
So um they also talk about what they they out, they do social so their their social aspect is a women's event, what what women's events are they talking about?
Yes, we try to meet with families, like uh families or women's who has a kids and we want to try to walk in when they were in the year, especially in the summer, try to to be together, the community. Especially the the Latino community.
And also, uh you talked about community groups, so what community groups do you are you talking about?
So, community groups like uh like uh when I said, when we um we are um telling the people where they can get the 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 COVID vaccine or even give information where they can uh look for help, for help.
Is there a specific organization name?
No, yes, uh we try to to cause it to bring all together, the community, the Latino community.
And you talk about social media, um you initiate that during the year, what what type of social media do you initiate?
We use only the Facebook.
The Facebook type of social media?
Mm-hmm.
And um and um um so I I think this is to our staff, um so um we we appropriate money for different nonprofits during the year. Uh that's a standard thing that we do, we have a we have a a fund that we use for that, am I correct?
It's 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 just a general fund and that two hundred thousand dollars is budgeted and appropriated. And we, last year when we put the list of events together, we basically awarded that amount, two hundred thousand to events that turn into applications divided between all them.
Well, we we are going outside of our our what we appropriated uh because of this.
Um we we would likely need to, then that's within the staff, but we'd need to appropriate that additional funding of the seven thousand nine hundred, I think it was, sorry. Yeah.
Okay, and and then uh again, finally, I'm trying to wrap my head around why this organization cannot come in in March, just like every other organization. Uh other organizations do it and we have no problem. Uh other organizations like Morgan Hill Community Foundation, I realize it's it's very different, but they give back thousands of dollars to the community. Um so if if we if we approve this, so any other organization could come in going to the guise of a soccer or something else. And this is setting a precedent that we have to allow this going forward.
This is this is your council policy, you can choose to follow it or you can choose to to make an exception. You you've established a policy with us and we're bringing it forward for the policy. But you as the council could also update the policy and make changes to it.
Okay, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mayor.
Before we go any further, it is it is past seven o'clock. If the council would allow for us to take a ten minute break, we'll come back and finish this item. Sentinels allows the students, if you want to stay, you're welcome, if you want to go ahead and make your exit, you can get your form signed by the Assistant City Clerk. We do appreciate you being here in attendance tonight, thank you so much, we're just gonna take a ten minute break.
Let me just sign before you, Kim.
We call the meeting back to order. Thank you for allowing us to take that break and let our students go. We want to go back to, again, we were on item number 12, still in the question phase here. So council member Lebers.
Hi. No, I got questions for staff. I just want to clarify, in March, when we put out these applications, there is a bucket of money, so much, and you said it was 200,000?
That's the recommendation that the city manager made for the budget.
Okay, that's a budgeted item, and at that time, all of that money was given out.
I believe within a hundred, a couple hundred dollars.
So if we were to approve this, where would that fund come from then? A general fund?
Yeah, general fund reserve is the only option that the council has to fund it.
All right. I, this is my first time hearing about all this, you know, I guess this has been going on for a couple of years. And I wasn't aware that there was actually a policy in place until this came up. So this was very good information for me. But I wanted to clarify with you that we did take care of sending them the application. And we did also give out all the money at the time for people that were on time, correct?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can look it up really quick, but I think it was within $300 of the 200,000 that we gave out.
I have some questions real quick and really geared more to, and I, is it, is it Mrs. Gomez? Is that, did I have the name right? No questions. I just wanted to say thank you. We appreciate you being here and answering these questions. I know it can be difficult. One of my questions is for staff. It's unfair for the council to have to actually have this debate. When the policy clearly calls out, the request received after the deadline shall not be accepted by the city staff. Why was this accepted?
Go ahead and respond to that. So, so you're referring to the policy and so item number five is late requests. And so these are just general late requests. It reads that the request received after the deadline shall not be accepted by city staff. So that's meant to apply to non-council member initiated events. Okay? Now, in adoption of this policy and creation of this policy, council wanted us to have a section of this policy that would allow individual council members to bring forward events that may come up and that the council member would want the council to be able to consider the event. And it would be an event that they would recommend. And so that's why section six was, was added. And so basically, six does speak to the timeline. And so six B says, all states, all council member initiated requests occurring after the March deadline must be provided the city manager 90 days in advance of the event to allow sufficient time to bring to city council for approval. Now, it does not state what we have up in five A, which is that they're not going to be accepted. And so there is some discretion in bringing this forward. And so as Mr. Goney mentioned, one of the events is outside of the 90 days. And so we're bringing them both forward to you for consideration, but one has been submitted within the 90 days.
And then I think one of the key phrases there is for, this is allowing council members for events that may come up. This event did not just may come up. It has, it has been, this is the third time it's come up. Posada is the fourth time it's come up. And so there was a policy set in March. Then there's a, now there's a policy that says, hey, a council member, again, a council member can do it. We would not allow, we would not allow a member of the public to come forward without going through a council member. Okay. But it's clearly 90 days. You're not in, before the 90 days, you've missed the second deadline. Am I reading that right? March is the first deadline, and then the 90 days is possibly the second.
The Dia de los Muertos, but for the Posada, it was within the 90 days.
I'm sorry, yes, that there, you do really have two items we're looking at here. We need to, we need to address them that way. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Since I did bring this forward, I did consider that these events have, they have not been late for the past few years. This policy, the first time it went into effect was last year. I did things in one time prior to that. Ms. Villia Gomez, can I ask you a question? Would you come and, and talk about this earlier in the year when we were considering the community funding?
Yeah, I was in the Zoom meeting in June and asked for the support for the city for our event. That was, was in June.
Okay.
Yes, what?
Yeah, I, I didn't, I can't, I didn't understand.
I understand because I have obviously talked with them since I brought this forward. They, little work, from what I understand, and you can correct me, Daya, but they have been working towards a not-for-profit status, which is part of the reason why they missed that in March, I understand. And then in June, they did come and let the council know when we were approving the community funding that they would be coming forward with a request, a separate request for the funding. That happened this June when we approved the budget. They were here and they spoke about that. So, thank you. I just, that's what I had wanted to ask you. And I guess, one of the other questions that I heard come up was, you know, was on, one was on the funding, I forget what. There was something else that somebody had asked about, but I know that they were not able to do it because they had all these, you know, there's lots of capacity building that is happening with this group.
Well, quickly, I do want to make sure you understand, this is the question phase. You want to address the council, we can do that in the council discussion.
Okay, okay, we can do that. And then you had asked about, you know, why this had come forward. And I think that was part of the reason as well, that I know that they had come before the council during that hearing.
A question or you're gonna ask?
No, I'm replying to the question that you asked to staff because I have some more information.
This is the question, question period. So if you have questions for the applicant or for Chris, we'll have those. Otherwise, we'll close the Chris question phase, we'll go to public comment, and we'll come back for, for council discussion.
Okay, and I do have some more questions.
Please go right ahead.
Villia, can you tell us, can you tell us roughly how many people have come for the celebration? And what you're looking to do this year with Dia de los Muertos?
Every, every year is a different, the first year we bring like 100, 100, 1500 people. And the second year, more people. And last year, we have a lot of people, more than 200. So, and the people is very happy to have this event, and the community is why we try to do it every year. Because they really, I don't know, they wants to celebrate our people, especially the people who pass away.
Thank you. I know that it's also, it's for people who have passed on. Dia de los Muertos is not, it's, it's to celebrate.
To celebrate our, the life of our families.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask you about the Posada. And if you can maybe just talk a little bit about how the Posada has cambiado los años.
Yeah.
Time? Is it moving? Because it's not moving online.
Yeah, I just thought that much.
Okay.
Okay, first, I want to say thank you to the city for the support in the last three years for the Dia de los Muertos and for, for years of the Posada. This is, these two events are very, very special for the community because, as I said, especially the death of the dead is something big for our, for our Latino community. For example, in my case, my mom passed away 15 years ago when I was here, and I never see her again. So this is a very special event, and I want to say thank you for your support. And another, second, second thing, there are a lot of Latino community here. The one that are waiting for the events, and they're happy to have these events in our community. And it's really hard for the Latino community to organize, especially they know about the law, the policies, all the, the requirements, the one that city has. You know, English is our second language. It's hard to speak in front of people. They are scared and afraid to come and talk to him. Like, now I am very nervous, but I try to do it because it's very special for us, these two events. In our communities, Latino work so hard. They have two or three jobs. The one they need to pay the rent, rent in Morgan Hill is too high. Everything is increased, food, rent, gas, everything. And they need to work hard to support the families. So I think these two events, the one we asked for a year, I think is a little bit of a gift for them to, to they can feel, I think they can feel they can be or they want to be at home. Because it's hard for us.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, very good. So we're gonna open this up to public comments.
Before you open it up, can I do a follow-on?
Nope, no, we're gonna go to public comment, okay, and then we're gonna come back. Okay.
Callers on Zoom.
Okay.
I'm gonna call.
Let me ask you this, how many do we have?
I have one now.
Okay.
Timothy?
There, I may have had my hand raised for the wrong reason. Is this the whole public comment or is this on the last agenda item? Sorry.
This is for the last agenda item?
My mistake, I will pass here. Thank you, apologies.
Other comments?
I do have Joe Baranowski.
Yeah, good evening, council and community members who might be listening. I support this request 1000%. What more important thing to do than to honor those who have gone before us? And I really suggest that if you haven't read the history of why, of how Halloween came about and how the, this celebration is so important, you do that. You know, you don't have to have a specific time. We spend, I don't know how much more money on some wonderful events that last a few hours or half a day. The altar is there for anyone who can go by at their leisure for a number of days. I think it should even be longer. Which is how I've done it, found a peaceful time of the day. I can't imagine the number of hours that go into the work. It's a beautiful, peaceful, soulful celebration. This is a huge bang for the buck compared to the number of people that I think are touched by other events for, for equal dollar. I support this 100%. Thank you.
What else?
No more speakers.
Did you turn in a card? Okay, and we are going to have to move on, I'm sorry. Turn in the card. Done. Yes, if you're gonna speak, you have to turn in a card. So please. Yeah, Kathy, why don't you go ahead and speak now? Turn the card in later.
As some of you know, I'm a member of the Morgan Hill Historical Society, and I've been on the board for almost eight years. And I have to share with you that before I joined, we didn't have a lot of activities or events for the Latino community, even though we represent 35% of Morgan Hill. And I want to share with you that we do have altars at the Historical Society site. But we cross-promote with the Posadas and the altar that's at the corner of Dunn in Monterey. And I'll just give you, because I can't help it, the Historical Society, I'll share some history. Dia de los Muertos has been celebrated for over 3,500 years in the Americas before the conquistadores came. It used to last a month in August. And I think it's especially important to recognize that for COVID, many people, especially our youth, didn't have any experience with death and losing people. Those altars at Monterey and at the Morgan Hill site play a key role in recognizing that part of life is death. But more importantly, to remember our loved ones. They help many people grieve. And we had those altars, and I can't say enough about that because it hits everyone. None of us will escape death. Many of us don't know how to cope with it or handle it. So those altars are not just an event, a social gathering. And I know the city gives much money to many nonprofits, but none of them deal with the kind of issues that we're talking about. Life and death, and how to honor our own people, whoever they are. To share something else, we just have the Latino community that comes. We can't keep track of who comes. Many people have been affected by death, and they don't know how to handle it because maybe they don't have a religion, a philosophy, and it doesn't help them to cope. But these altars and knowing that they can remember a loved one do. That's why it's so critical. The other part is that many Latino community members don't feel comfortable going to City Hall and asking for help. So what I would do is I would recommend and I will offer to, to volunteer to help Nueva Esperanza to next year submit on time or before, because I've written many grants for Morgan Hill Historical Society. And I will assure you that I will help them. So this one time, since it's a new policy, these are people who are not familiar with the laws, the functions, the deadlines. Please remember that 35% of this community is Latino, and this Dia de los Muertos is important. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other? Okay. Please go right ahead.
I do have a card, Philia.
Sure, sure.
We don't have the money tonight. The city can help us in doing that, this event for us.
We will discuss that here just briefly. Yep. Thank you for that question. We appreciate it. Yep.
Mayor, I do have some callers on Zoom. Did you want to go to Zoom comments or?
Well, to pass that, we're going to now bring it back for council discussion. Any comments by council members?
Oh, I, 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 I need to readdress some questions in order to make an intelligent decision.
That's fine, this is discussion time, so questions are a part of that.
Okay, so I, I would like to ask Chris, so when they brought it to you and you knew one of the events was not in the 90-day, why did you go forward and accept that? Because it clearly wasn't in.
I think, I think Christina already addressed that. I asked the same question. And it was, it was such that, well, policy number five A there is really about the, it's more to do with the initial, the March deadline. The policy that was passed by the previous council allowed a, another opportunity, bite at the apple, if you will, but it is required to be in 90 days prior. But in that, in that policy of six B, it doesn't state that the city would reject that application because they didn't fall within that 90 days.
We need to bring that back to the, absolutely, it should be, yeah. So, in fact, that, that will be one of my items at the end there.
On my list too.
Chris, can they just apply for a permit for the altar? Does it have to be this March thing? Can, can they do just a permit for the altar?
Yes.
Okay. And, so this probably is gonna go to Ms. Gomez. Why, why doesn't your group do fundraising during the year? Again, I'm gonna, and I know it's not a one-to-one, but many of our other groups, they do fundraisers all year. And they accumulate, you know, small to a large amount of money to help offset the once-a-year function that they have. And again, you know, if this is really important to the Latin community, why aren't you doing something like that? Because this is about the third year it's been happening with something like that.
Yeah, we try to, to do fundraising and also we ask to like Latino restaurants or stores to helping us. And they, and also families, they can support us, they can try to give or give us some, some items or money, a little bit, that, the one they can, because the one I said, it is very hard for the Latino community. They have two or three jobs, and they need to pay the bills and support the family. But we try to make fundraising. So I think one, one time we're selling tamales. And so we try to make, to do something to.
But I, if, if.
We don't have. I, I think I'm finished.
Okay, very good. Council member Spring, then I'll come back to.
Yeah, the, you know, I, I, I understand the policy and, and, and it wasn't completely followed as we, we encouraged the various groups, and then I know Nueva Esperanza knows that. But again, they're a volunteer organization, people that work all day and work hard. And, and they're not a well-established nonprofit like Community Foundation or Historical Society, but a group of activists, people, residents, but wanting to do something good for the Latino community that lives here. But obviously, I have gone to the both events, and I encourage all of you to go. They're fun events. You see people that you don't see at the regular events that many of us often go to. They don't charge anything, right? $4,800 for 300 people of our community. That is nothing. That is nothing. And it's almost shameful that, that we have to talk about it. It's such a small amount to, to support a big chunk of our community. For such a wonderful event, actually two events, and both are very wonderful. I'm not gonna play the green cheer and say, we're not going to help here. I say, I apologize, I appreciate people I cannot really stepping up and maybe work with Mrs. Gomez next year to make sure that the organization comes. It's not our job to tell other groups how they should be organized. It's a small amount of money. I think we can afford it as a city. It's not gonna bankrupt the city. But it will make several hundred peoples happy. It will help remember those we lost. And as long as we remember, they will, they will be around. And, and, and they will, wherever they are right now, they will not be forgotten. And it takes these kinds of, of cultural events to include, increase our own mindset of, of what cultural richness we have in our community. And I would hate to see it not happening this year just because they missed the deadline. And that would not be okay with me. Anyone else?
Well, I have another question for staff. Is that okay?
Okay, sure.
Yeah. It is extremely difficult to get a Saturday at the Community Cultural Center. I know, I work with nonprofits. How long ago did they apply for the rent of that room?
I, I don't, I do not know the, the date that they got the permit at the CCC. I know they were worked, worked with staff to find open dates, and it hasn't always been on a Saturday. It, it has been on a Friday in the past. So they worked to find the open dates that were available when they booked it. It, it has not been booked for like a year plus in advance.
No, no, but I mean, is it like a week ago they, or?
No, it's been, it's been several months that they, they booked it.
They booked it several months, okay.
Or, or the date, they worked on the date.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense.
And we've had, we've had this application for some time too.
Okay, good to know. And then also, and now my comment is, listening to the lovely Mrs. Gomez speak, it sounds as though, you know, we talk about fundraising. Is this event for mostly low-income people? Because I know some Hispanic families that have money and perhaps would help them. But is it geared to that population of low income?
Well, this event is for the, the whole community.
Does, does the whole community, Hispanic community come, or just your immediate reach?
It's coming more the median in low income.
Yeah, no, okay, thank you.
Comments or questions? Discussion, discussion time, so I should say it that way. Any, any?
We're in discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I want to thank you first for coming. I'm clearly in support of this, and I, I think council member Spring, who I know has gone, to thank everyone that they've had.
I even did sing with you.
I know you did, you did. Mayor was able to come to the Posada last year. And as you remember, it is a packed house.
Yes.
But this is, it's quite an amazing idea. We talk often about how, you know, there's been a Christmas tree at the corner of downtown Monterey and Dunn, how there's been a menorah at the corner of downtown and Dunn. And the dream was to have an altar at the corner in downtown and Dunn. at the corner in downtown and Dunn and, and that has been done. And it's really, um, I would say that it does, it touches everybody. I mean, I've had so many people that have come out and commented on it. Um, on how beautiful it is, not only here, but you know, this, they say that imitation is the biggest compliment. And you'll see that our neighboring city is now imitating that and trying to do similar. So um, I think it's a beautiful asset for us to have here in Morgan Hill. I think it makes people feel included. I know that the youth of um, worked with who come out and they actually put the lays together to lay these hundreds of flowers that go on this. And I've had um, a couple of parents, one parent in particular, Pilah, who's told me anytime that, you know, we're doing something like this, she wants her children to be involved because she feels like it reinforces the traditions and she's not able to do that. Um, in a way that she'd like, that she remembers from her home country. You don't have to be from, you know, from Exxon. I'm third generation American. And my family very much celebrates Dia de los Muertos and celebrates the Posada. And that's why I've been so supportive of it. I do understand and, and um realize, you know, it is, there is capacity building that's going on here. There's a language barrier that's going on here. There's many um, members who work in this group that I work with that, that don't have documentation and, and it is real. They fear that they fail. Um, sometimes it can be very intimidated for people to come and talk to people who are in authority, who have a position, um, you know, within the city. And we don't fund. I mean, these are probably the, some of the only events that we fund for the Latino community. And I think it's a really well-spent investment for our community. So I am happy to, to do this. I appreciate, you know, all of the support that I've seen um, as far as offering help. And I really want to thank you.
I'm gonna reserve some time for myself. Just, I have comments as well, so.
I really want to thank you, Delia, for your, for your courage on behalf of all your community members.
Thank you, Councilmember. And yes, indeed, thank you for being here. We do appreciate that. I, I, I'm, I will say I'm a bit frustrated by a number of things here. I think it's, again, uh, Councilmember Martinez Beltran, it sounds like you work with this group.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the frustration for me is, you were part of this in the last council, in putting this policy together and approving it.
Actually, when we talked about that policy, I, there were a couple of points that I did not agree with, but as you know, in a council, we, we make a consensus, that's correct.
My point being, you work with this group and here we are sixty days before the event and it's coming to us. I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you, I'm frustrated by that.
I understand that you're frustrated there, but.
Done yet. I'm, I'm just making comments. I'm just telling you, I'm.
Comment at me and what I will say is that I cannot corral people who are in different countries. I can support and I educate and I help.
You certainly can talk, I mean, you've got access. I mean, we can go on all day long, but I'm just telling you, I'm frustrated by that because I don't think it's fair that this council gets put in this situation uh as though somehow we don't appreciate the history or that we don't appreciate the community or that there's something other than the fact that the policy, which has been in place, has not been followed. And it creates a difficult situation. I'm, I'm fully on board with the Posada. I could easily approve and move on with that. I think that's not a problem. Uh, maybe there's, maybe the council would be open to something um, as far as making the the community center space available to them. And, and that there, that is the contribution on behalf of the city. I'm not in favor. I, I'm really, again, I'm frustrated by the fact that, you know, we're again in the situation of having to now decide to fund it this late in the game. Uh, I would be, if, if the council would be willing to consider, uh, we're gonna, and, and what I want to do is take the Day of the Dead event first. And then we'll vote on the Posada event second. So the, for me, I would be okay if the council said, hey, let's, let's go ahead and provide the space as a gift. And beyond that, the organization will have to raise some money and, and help make it happen on their own. I don't know if that's anything that the council would consider. Any thoughts on it?
I, I, I think I would be open to that.
Yeah, me too, that we would give the facility.
Yeah, and that's a couple of thousand dollars as I'm understanding it. Is that correct, Chris?
It's more like four thousand.
Yes, um, that is correct. I, I believe it will be about half of the request.
Okay.
Yep. And, and I know it's not a motion yet, but just to clarify, you're talking now about the.
That is correct. The Day of the Dead event first and then the Posada second.
So, so what you would say is, uh, we would fund the, all the costs and permit fees associated with it. No additional dollars for renting the.
In other words, you would, uh, the council would make a motion to waive all city fees to include rental space.
Yeah, we, we have stopped waiving fees to kind of not impact the recreation cost recovery piece. And so we tend to do the transfer of dollars, but.
Yeah, okay, I get it. Six of one, half dozen the other, but yeah. If, if the council's open to doing something like that, I would, I'd be willing to entertain a motion to, to do it that way for the Day of the Dead event.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So how much, how much, what, how much are they asking for that piece and how much would, looks like it would, that motion include?
Thirty-one.
The event is requesting four thousand eight hundred dollars for the uh for the, I'm sorry, I have that backwards.
Yeah.
I, I had it backwards today. Yeah. Um, they're requesting three thousand one hundred dollars for the Dia de los Muertos event. And so I think a little more than half of that would be the facility fees, but yeah.
And they will be using inside too? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm okay. And then Mrs. Gomez, I think we can help you get the list offline.
Yeah, I, I'm actually, I'm willing to help. And I, I think we have an obligation to the city uh, with regard to the finances. I'm more than happy to work with everyone to have raised that money. And I think, I think as far as the city goes, we need to do this. We need to be done right. And so Kathy, we're gonna take you up on that offer to have you help next year and certainly appreciate your offer to do that. That would be, that would be great. So I would entertain a motion.
Second.
You're gonna be the, you'll be the motioner.
Okay.
The motioner then. They'll move by, do you know, Councilmember Borrioli?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Levers.
And to clarify, the motion is to waive all the fees associated with the.
Do you want it worded differently?
The city will cover the costs associated with the rental fees and permit fees.
Very good. You're good with it. Secondo is good with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, that passes five zero. So now the second item is the Posada event.
Again, I, so, so that one, that one follows the policy? Yes, it does. It, it, I just want to clarify that and so I make the motion to approve that one.
Very good. Is it, Councilmember uh, uh, Spring is the mover on that, or the, makes the motion, second by Councilmember Martinez Beltran? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. Please go ahead.
How, how much was this one? This forty-eight?
Forty-eight, yeah.
Okay.
Eight hundred, yep.
Okay.
Now on this one, no fees will be waived.
No, that, that total amount, that they would get that amount of funding, that would pay for their fees. And then the dollars remaining would be used for the event activities.
Okay, very good.
How, how much are those fees?
I don't know that that.
I, I can, it's gonna take me about five minutes to look it up. I believe it's between, I believe it's between two and three thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're not worried about that. Yeah, okay. Uh, so we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, that passes five zero. All right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lopez, thank you. Appreciate you being here, Delia. You did a great job. You're welcome. What did I say? Yumi, thank you so much. You're welcome. Today are gonna, we're gonna work with you to raise additional money.
Yes, yeah.
We'll definitely get.
Uh, we are then going to now go to item number eleven. This is accept the Morgan Hill Tourism Business Improvement District uh, Owners Association annual report. And we are having Matt Mayhood is coming up and I think Krista Rupp would visit Morgan Hill.
Mister Mayor, members of City Council, my city teammates and members of the community, Matt Mayhood, Economic Development Director. I'm not here to give you a presentation. We have uh Krista Rupp, who's the Executive Director of Visit Morgan Hill, who will give you a presentation on the annual uh report for Visit Morgan Hill. And I also want to thank you for during the consent calendar, um, adopting the resolution, the intention um to form and renew the uh Morgan Hill T-Bid. So thank you very much. And turn it over to Krista.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the introduction, Matt. I'm Krista Rupp, the Executive Director of Visit Morgan Hill. And tonight I will be going over some of the annual report. That was included in your packets, so I hope that you had a chance to review that. Um, but I will spend some time going over the highlights. So a little bit of background, uh, Visit Morgan Hill is the management organization for the Morgan Hill Tourism Business Improvement District. We implement marketing, business development and partnership tactics to increase tourism and room night sales in Morgan Hill. We have a staff of one and a board of nine directors. We were formed in twenty nineteen and we are a five oh one C six organization. As Matt mentioned, thank you for approving the resolution of intention to renew the Morgan Hill T-Bid. And I will be seeing you at a couple more council meetings on that item. We have a wonderful board of directors. They're represented by four hotel representatives as well as three community members representing wineries, sports and recreation and the community at large. We also have two City of Morgan Hill staff members on our board. We are led by a strategic plan that we completed in two thousand and twenty. This is our long-term guide for the activities and programs that we implement. The plan analyzed our tourism assets in Morgan Hill, our opportunities, markets and approach. We also identified three priorities for tourism, including the development of a leisure travel market, sports and private event group development and partnership and product development. So first I want to go over some market indicators. Um, these show the health of the tourism industry and may be influenced by external factors. So while they're not directly attributed to Visit Morgan Hill's efforts, they're still important in terms of understanding tourism performance. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we saw hotel market improvements and some shifts. The depressed Bay Area travel market continued. We had greater shares of private groups, construction and leisure business in the hotels. Hotel occupancy levels approached normal, but were somewhat plateaued in this year. Room rates increased, but they were still lower than pre-pandemic peaks. And we started to experience the impacts of inflation and cost of living as well as the cost of travel. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, this is um, the, the year-over-year T-Bid analysis. So we saw a twenty-one point nine percent increase over the prior year. And this was about ninety-four percent of the pre-pandemic fiscal year nineteen, twenty level. So almost fully recovered if you look at it that way. Um, but it's still short of the original estimate for our district, which was four hundred and ten thousand dollars annually. Um, moving forward with our renewed T-Bid, the estimate is about three hundred and forty-one thousand annually. So that's the, the new market realities. Uh, looking at the monthly T-Bid, uh, there's obviously a clear drop in the winter months. Um, this reinforces a need to develop tourism markets that are not necessarily dependent on uh outdoor venues or fair weather. Hotel performance. So at the hotel level, year-to-date, uh, these are July year-to-date of this year. Um, occupancy is at about sixty-five percent. That's a point one uh increase year-over-year. So that's the plateau I mentioned to you. Average daily rate and revenue per available room are lower than we would like, but we did see a three point three to three point four percent year-over-year increase.
You mind going back one, one slide? Yeah. Saying, and forgive me for interrupting, but I just want to catch you right there.
Okay.
The average daily rate is up three point three percent. Okay, year-over-year.
Year-over-year, year-to-date.
Got it. Very good, thank you.
January through July. Um, so we also get Visa credit cards uh data that we subscribe to. And that sheds some positive light on visitor spending. So we can see the zip code and separate out resident from visitor. And visitors make up a substantial percentage of lodging, entertainment, restaurants and dining and retail spending in Morgan Hill. So you can see those shares on, on the far side of this chart. And if we look at all merchant segments, so not just hotels, restaurants, retail, um, year-to-date, it makes up forty percent of the spend in Morgan Hill. And that's a pretty good growth. Um, happy to see that jump year-over-year. And this is a good thing that we can look at each year to really um weigh how much visitors are spending in our city. So now we'll look at some performance metrics that are more directly attributed to our activities and programs. Um, each year we implement an annual work plan and that covers a range of tactics including a website, blog, event calendar, public relations efforts, social media management, group lead generation, local partnership, regional promotions and tourism asset advocacy. In terms of website and digital, visitmorgenhill.org is the marketing authority for visitor information. A strong digital presence augments awareness of Morgan Hill by making us discoverable on online search and providing a place for online referrals to land. We had two hundred and eleven thousand website page views and almost seventeen thousand clicks out uh, to business partners. I listed about a thousand events on our public event calendar last year and uh published fourteen original blog stories. We had a nine point six percent click-through rate on our email newsletters. So looking back to where our website was when we first started out, you can see it was fairly flat in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, the green and red lines show some jumps where we invested in our first major campaign to really launch our website and brand. And then uh this brown line is where we are now. So now we aren't relying on that pay-per-click investment. And you can see that our web traffic is holding its own and, and, you know, it doesn't have those peaks, but it's still fairly high. Another couple of metrics that I find particularly meaningful are the social media engagement rate and our social and direct website referrals. So year-to-date, we have an average of seven point five percent engagement across our social media platforms. The average industry rate is one to three percent. So we perform really, really well here. Um, you can see the screenshot of this nice glass of cider. There were two thousand shares on that, which is pretty crazy. Um. People aren't just liking our content, they're sharing it, they're sending it to their friends. And then looking at the number of, or the, the increase of our referrals. So that's a nine hundred and twenty-one percent increase. Um, those are other sites like those that are listed here, Visit California, the Outdoor Sports Center, Pacific Swimming. They are directing clicks to our website. And um, part of that is, is social media as well. They're clicking from a social media account to our site. So having others singing our praises is way better than doing it ourselves. We are now at a point where people are referring back to Visit Morgan Hill. Um, for advertising, we had a very successful fall-winter campaign. This was on Facebook and Instagram last year. Um, our ads captured a three point six percent click-through rate, which is almost four times the industry average on this type of campaign. And I think that our success was due to a few reasons. Um, the image that we used as well as the name Morgan Hill is, is still somewhat novel. Um, it's intriguing. Not everyone knows about us. And then uh, we were very intentional with the targeting and we offered a compelling reason for them to click on this, which was uh, linking to our four reasons to plan a trip to Morgan Hill blog. Another accomplishment we had was our partnership effort to attract the Bay Area Panthers headquarters. Visit Morgan Hill played an instrumental role in coordinating site tours for the team uh, leadership. And by working closely with Outdoor Sports Center and the City of Morgan Hill, we presented one cohesive offer, closed the deal and secured a significant uh, sponsorship marketing package. Um, most significant of our package, I, I won't read through all of this, but we got some really great uh, TV commercials. Uh, we had two spots on Bay Area TV during each home game and another two on uh, National CBS Sports Network during the championship game. During the season, we captured about five hundred room nights at local hotels and twenty weeks of field rentals. There are also a lot of other numerous benefits around town. Uh, the team lived here and frequented many restaurants as well as services. Um, the Panthers agreement also included coordination of three events. So it was meet the coach, meet the players, and then the Morgan Hill Monday night. And then uh, the Panthers just so happened to win the championship. So uh, we put that feather in our hat and uh, threw a really, really great parade for them. The Chamber of Commerce also uh, came into the fold as a fundamental partner and we also had additional support from the Downtown Association, Kiwanis and many individuals and other businesses. Another successful partnership this year was leveraging Visit California's Rural Region Grant Program. The program grants rural, as Visit California defines it, um, with funding and special marketing opportunities. Though Morgan Hill is in the South Bay, Visit California groups Morgan Hill with the Central Coast. Therefore, we may benefit from this program by participating on the Volunteer Oversight Committee. Some of these benefits uh, were hosting a professional video shoot. So that was a professional crew that came out that we didn't have to really spend any money on. And we also had our imagery selected for a regional ad campaign, which is a beautiful picture you see here. Um, and then we also had many media features on Visit California um, and the Central Coast websites, which were part of generating those referrals that I mentioned earlier. Um, we also had a lot of uh, pieces within the Central Coast Newsletter and their blog. They also repost many of our events as well. In terms of print materials, we secured a hidden gem spot, which is that nice picture you see here. Um, this was the award-winning Central Coast map. Uh, we also revamped our own brochure with a professional design and distribution company. The print run of thirty thousand is stocked in racks at five California Welcome Centers, San Jose and Oakland airports and over two hundred San Francisco hotels, car rentals and the airport. We also put a Morgan Hill placement in the Visit California Road Trip Guide. And as Visit Morgan Hill grew and matured this year, we also introduced a comprehensive journalist and media hosting program. We hosted three journalists, uh, including Allegiant Airline, San Joaquin Magazine and California Bountiful. Allegiant Air published a one-page Morgan Hill feature in the spring issue and the others are due to come out in the next couple of months. Uh, additionally, we were able to benchmark over twenty media mentions in local and regional publications like SF Gate, Seven by Seven and K R L N. We continue to see the fruits of our uh, June twenty-two media, uh, social media influencer tour. Um, they continued publishing new Morgan Hill content into uh, this reporting term. And then in May, uh, we refined our influencer approach and hosted um, just, just one couple. Um, they were Gwen and Army. They came uh, during the Open Streets Day and they actually got to ride the roller skates. So that was really cool for them. Uh, they produced a very highly engaging reel and there were hundreds of comments, people that were just discovering Morgan Hill. So um, we find that sprinkling these influencer partnerships is very valuable. In terms of our own social media, um, we also matured here a bit this year. Uh, we produced a much higher volume and consistency of video content. So for the year, we produced forty-three videos um, and conducted two organic campaigns. So, so those were two video series. And then the result was that our Instagram following increased by fifty-two percent. And we had an engagement rate just on that platform for that uh, fiscal year reporting term of six-point-four-three percent. All right, shifting gears to business development. This is the area where we focus on generating group event and room night leads. We have venues and facilities listed on our website along with a request for proposal form. So with that form, um, people can submit their, their requests. And for the year, we generated fifty-two leads, uh, representing over fifteen hundred room nights. We distribute those directly to the hotels and the venues and then they may bid on those and close the business. Another, another role that we play is in sourcing hotel room blocks for events that are already happening. So a few um, significant sports events that we supported were NCAA Men's Golf Regionals and that was in partnership with San Jose Sports Authority. Um, this one generated about five hundred room nights in May. Um, this was also the first full year um, that we were free from pandemic restrictions on group events. So um, we had a full sports tournament schedule for this calendar year that's still happening. That'd be a total of forty large group tournaments at the Aquatic Center and Outdoor Sports Center. And that represents about a hundred and nineteen thousand individual visitors. And there's, there's some disclaimers here on, on how that number is calculated, but um, still all good news in terms of sports. Um, not to be overlooked are our community partnership efforts. So Visit Morgan Hill also uh, makes room to provide advocacy support in the form of letters and comments on issues pertaining to our local tra- uh, tourism industry. Uh, I also regularly attend uh, strategic partner meetings with the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce and the Wineries Association. We also provide some project-based support. Uh, for example, we supported on the marketing committee for the uh, Community Foundation's Wine Auction. Getting hard to turn my pages. So in conclusion, for this year, we have increased Morgan Hill's relevance and recognition as a travel destination. We secured earned media coverage in a travel-specific context to an audience wider than ever before. We strengthened digital presence by growing our social media and owned content channels. We benchmarked our group room night leads and successfully partnered to host a professional sports team. And we expanded our engagement for a more unified and better-informed local tourism network. Having launched during the most significant economic downturn in history, figures are rebounding and tourism is moving in a positive direction. Having a stable, long-term funding source will allow us to continue growing Morgan Hill's tourism to its potential. Uh, we do have an exciting event planned. Um, this is a tourism industry summit taking place Monday on uh, Monday, November sixth at Mohai Winery. Um, we will have a keynote speaker from Visit California as well as some panels um, discussing agriculture, sports, recreation, culinary and wine, as well as some um, uh, colleagues from neighboring destinations for Destination Roundtable. So if you don't already have it on your calendar, please save the date. You are all invited and uh, registration details will come very soon. Lastly, I'll just leave you with some resources. Our website here is visitmorgenhill.org as well as our handles for uh, Facebook, Instagram and TikTok. Um, and just one last thing before I close, one favor to ask. Um, in the annual report, there was one error and it was on the board of directors list. So uh, when you do consider approving the uh, accepting the annual report, um, I would like to include amending that, that detail in the report.
And who is that?
It's Bina Roy Desai. So there's a chart on uh, one of the first few pages.
Two.
Yeah, you'll see only, only eight board members are listed there.
Okay, so you left that, that board member off. Got it? Is that right? Okay.
No, this isn't an action item, so we won't be approving anything.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that you have the right, the right one uh, filed.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you. Wonderful report. We appreciate that. I'm gonna see if there's any uh, questions there.
Yes, it's not, this isn't an action item, but um, certain questions from the council are appropriate.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? And we're gonna just do one round then, just questions and comments right here. We'll try to keep it brief and then Councilmember Bo Gioli and I'll come back to you.
So I, I'm not sure, did you have your hand up?
You're gonna first? Uh, Councilmember Springs, one second.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, let me put my glasses back on. If you can go through the, to the site, although not necessary, the CTR of nine-point-six you said was really, really good. Was that compared to maybe a year ago or two years ago?
Yeah, so um, that is our newsletter program and we have two different lists. We have a local industry list and a consumer list. And so it's hard to compare apples to apples. We first had just the industry list and have introduced the consumer list. Um, but it is far above industry average and we have fifty-eight percent open rate as well. So um, that's averaging both newsletters.
So again, I'm not familiar with the o- open rates and click-through rates. So is the fifty-eight percent like, like really, really good or?
It's pretty good. I mean, as, as your, as a newsletter list goes up, you would usually expect more like a twenty-five percent open rate. Um, but yeah, we're very targeted and try to be relevant.
Thank you. Could you go back to the website history? There it is. I, I found this one really interesting. So two thousand and twenty-three, uh, you ended in, I, it looks like the end of July. Am I correct there?
Yeah.
So if, that, that looks like a straight line up. What, uh, just based on your experience and that, where do you think that's gonna be like in December?
It tends to follow the seasonal swing, so you can see things softening towards November, December. So I would not be surprised if that's the way it goes.
Okay, but higher or, or maybe lower? You don't know.
Yeah.
A crystal ball you don't have.
We would hope it goes higher, but
Yeah.
it, it probably will swing back down unless there's some major anomaly like in May of two thousand and twenty-two, we had what, something like twenty thousand views on uh, the, the mushroom martigra, as it was called at the time. Cause it was the first time it came back and that was a huge bump on top of our advertising. Um, so yeah, I, I would expect it to peak there unless we have something else happen.
It's a nice straight line as compared to some of the others. So thank you. Um, could you go to the, uh, path of sponsorship? Um, the sponsorship page. There it is. Um, oh, you know what? I, I, I can't, I can't see it. Let me see if I can get back to it. I'm sorry. Uh, Mayor, I, I know I don't, there is. So um, the local economic impact, you said, um, there, there were five hundred hotel room nights. Was that? Um, was that from any one or several events or?
So that was for the team. So there was a, like a training camp, a three-week, or I'm sorry, it was a ten-day training camp. And so that was like several rooms. And then there were also individual like coaches coming out to visit and stay as well as um, some of the teammates lived in hotels part-time, like as they were figuring out where they were placing players in different apartments. Um, so this was kind of everything, a, a mix of different sources.
And was it sprinkled amongst all of the hotels or just several?
Two or three hotels.
Two or three, okay. Thank you. And could you go to the sports business, the SJS A? I don't know what page that was on tha- there. So um, that one also brought in a significant amount of rooms. And, and so was that the same where it was just a mixture of different hotels?
This one was a little different. So this was actually condensed into, I want to say under seven days of some people arriving early, setting up for this golf tournament. And then the actual teams coming and staying and then leaving. So this was in a much shorter time period and was much more specific where hotels actually bid on the, the room block.
So did these hotels realize that this bump in uh, rooms came from, directly came from your effort?
This one, yes. I sent them the lead of what they were looking for in terms of hotel rooms.
Okay. Thank you. Great job.
Councilmember Spring.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Mr. For, for your uh, report that read it with great interest. And then I started digging in. So I went to Visit California, typed in Morgan Hill, nothing shows up, nothing. But we do invite them to come as keynote speakers. I, I see a disconnect there. Why? Why don't even bother mentioning, why don't they, why don't they even mention Morgan Hill?
So where we're mentioned is in their um, industry site. So industry dot visitCalifornia. And that's where these are actually um, placements that are sent out to a thousand targeted journalists and media. So we're not on that main consumer site in, in that way. Um, but we are on there in the Google Story Network. So we have these, they're similar to a uh, story like on Instagram, uh, where we create these tiled things. And so we're on their website there. And so we get cli- click-throughs from that.
So, but if I'm not familiar with Morgan Hill, right, might just visit California, right? And, and then I just looked around and, and nothing shows up. No wonder no one finds Morgan Hill.
Yeah.
What, what does it take to change that?
It takes getting more familiar with Visit California and their programs run so deep and so broad. They have international marketing, travel trade, journalism, as well as their consumer advertising. So we're starting to break into that. It's very competitive. A lot of destinations have two to four percent T bid and they are waving their flags in front of Visit California and getting the attention. So it does take consistency. It takes um, shaking the right hands, making the right connections as well as providing them assets and, and getting them excited to feature us.
Yeah, so, so I, I think I saw you, you'll have a keynote speak on November eighth from the I guess it would be good discussion to have with them. Uh, to, how, how can they help us to get?
I, I will take a note of that.
Do you? So then the next, the next thing I did, I went to tripadvisor.com, which, which is a site many use that travel. Uh, look for Morgan Hill. First one comes up, Monterey Bay watching.
Trip Advisor, um, they are highly focused on attractions. So we don't have a beach boardwalk. We don't have a ticketed aquarium. So that was actually a, an OTA, not for hotels, for attractions. So because we don't have a lot of ticketed attractions, we're not going to be on TripAdvisor as much.
I, I
This is also because we are shifting from
I, I'm sorry, I'd like to differ. So when you actually scroll down in that page, uh, look at the, the, what shows up. And then the dog park shows up, the magical bridge, the ground shows up, local acid, the Villa Miramanta shows up, uh, Goya M Winery, uh, other wineries as well. I, and I think all it takes is just some people submitting. other wineries as well. I and I think all it takes is just some people submitting something they've seen and liked in Morgan Hill and it will start showing up. Does not cost to send. But a lot of people use these kinds of sites when they plan their trips and 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 book their hotels. And and I think we, maybe I'm wrong, but correct me, but I think we're lacking a little bit the strategy of reaching those that actually do plan trips.
So this is where we are shifting from business travel to leisure. We are starting from ground, from ground zero. We need to build that recognition. It takes time and it takes money. And we have limitations with both of those. So this is the long term strategy to build that leisure market. Because again, it's competitive. It doesn't just happen overnight. I mean, I don't know that there's any kind of marketing program where I could perhaps pay someone or tell someone to put something on TripAdvisor. However, there are things that we can do and we'll continue to work on those. But we are very foundational when you look at it and that's because of our resources.
Right. But i- isn't tourism leisure?
Not all tourism is leisure.
The the way we define tourism in Morgan Hill with visiting the wineries.
Yeah, so that's the leisure bucket. Then we have the group sales and sports tourism development. Within leisure, we have those pillars, the wine, the the restaurants, downtown, events, nature, hiking.
So so if you were to agree, and I knowing you, you will, may maybe have a discussion with your boards, you know, how to tap into those sites where all those board members and everyone we know could some do submissions of of what we like about Morgan Hill, what we visited, and they will start showing up. Does not cost any money. It just takes a few people to do that.
Thank you.
But I I'd like to to see when I do a search on those sites, I'd like to see Morgan Hill showing up and then.
Absolutely.
Jose Mari, when I type in Morgan Hill on TripAdvisor. So there was a page on there where I think Visa data. Like numbers, number ten or so.
He says this one or this one?
One, yes. So I'm not sure how how to read this and maybe you can help me, but so somehow they look at who is not from Morgan Hill and spends money in Morgan Hill? Or what does that mean? What what am I reading here?
So this is spending in Morgan Hill on Visa credit cards.
By people not living here?
They can see, so it's the total spend year over year is both residents and non residents. So overall spend increased by these amounts in the middle column. The visitor's share of that spend is represented in this last column with these percents.
Okay. And and do you have any any data from previous years on on how much visitors spent on in those categories?
Goes back to twenty twenty one.
Is it growing? It's it's like retail growing, shrinking, declining?
I would say it's definitely grown from twenty twenty one. That was kind of still pandemic. So it's kind of a throwaway year. So we are still benchmarking in many of these areas. As I mentioned, it was the first full year without any pandemic restrictions in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
And is Visa the just the card that is most used? Or the one we just have act somehow act they access to data?
They're the ones that have this program that many, many tourism organizations use. And this is actually a co-op buy-in through Visit California. So Visit California has this program in bulk. So we're able to get this at a really approachable cost.
So and and the entertainment, what 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 is the entertainment in Morgan Hill?
Could be bowling. I I could look up specifically what the merchant code is, but it's like movie theater, bowling. I think nightlife might actually be under that instead of restaurants and dining, but I would have to go look at it specifically. It gets very granular.
And the wineries would be what, restaurant?
I I'm not sure where they would be in that. They might be entertainment. I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, so I I really studied your report, tried to understand it a lot, because again, I suck at the data. But the the details are important and 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 I'd like to understand your organization's strategy moving forward now that we approved the ten year term, you know, what what are your goals for next year? What do you want to achieve?
I hear what you're asking. And I think that reviewing just this data could take this whole amount of time that I've been standing up here. As well as presenting this annual report, I didn't go over a lot of our strategy. We do a strategy every year with our with our annual work plan, where we look at the current marketing conditions, all these figures we look at every year and and evaluate if we are positioning correctly for that year. So that could be a whole other Pandora's box presentation, but isn't necessarily fitting for.
My last question from my mayor. So is is the strategy, is that confidential or is that something you share with us as councilmembers?
If you ask, I I can share it.
I'd like, I ask officially.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you here real quick. You had mentioned one of the statistics, nine hundred and twenty one percent social indirect referral growth. That is, that's outstanding. Who do you attribute that to?
That was my being more active on social media. And what that number is made up of is the five hundred four thousand seventy two referrals from other websites and the five hundred or five thousand four hundred eleven referrals from social media. So that was being strategic in our posts, tagging people more, producing content that we hoped incited more comments.
Yeah.
And and just focusing on on that. And then the PR side is what boosted the referrals from other websites. There are many of them there, but having other outlets speaking about Visit Morgan Hill and linking to something drives that traffic.
Very good. Do you do any co-op advertising with CCTC? You do?
Yeah.
Good, good. Let's see, a couple of questions here. Under the Barry Panthers Team Headquarters that you had mentioned, job creation, do you know how many jobs were created with the Panthers?
It was probably seven or eight local jobs with their team staff.
Okay, appreciate your report on sporting and event business development. I thought you did a good job with all of that. Do we have any data on how many overnight stays were generated through the you talked about the Morgan Hill Aquatics Center, also hosted two major West Coast swim meets with a cumulative eight thousand attendees. Do we have any data on overnight stays?
I have data for the the previous year, not this year. So they chose not to do the room block route. So that really restricts what data we're able to access. So it's all anecdotal and it's all apples to oranges when we get it back from hotels. But it was significant, a significant number of rooms, probably comparable to the NCAA men's golf.
And hotels, I don't get to get too much into details. Hotels just don't track those kinds of events.
If there's not a room block,
Yeah.
it's much more difficult because all the reservations are coming in individually.
Got it, okay. What do you need from us?
That's the question you asked or was asked last year. I came prepared. So a few things. Tourism's integrated in our community. It's it's definitely not a a separate entity. It's overlapped with the things that the residents enjoy, like infrastructure, businesses, restaurants, et cetera. And so sustainably growing tourism takes into account all these impacts. Not all tourism is good tourism. So just having the understanding of of that, sometimes tourism is not always a good word in in other places where maybe they're having over tourism or locals and residents are at odds. It's also not a magic bullet solution in terms of financials or budget. It's a complementary, it's a complementary revenue stream for the city and our businesses. So it's something that we have an opportunity to grow and diversify where money's coming into our city from. Supporting a business friendly environment is always good and and supporting tourism. Independent small businesses give a place charm and character. So making it easy for people to start a business or grow their business is something that helps tourism overall. And same goes for agriculture or sports facilities or nature environmental organizations, if they're looking to do things, just and and awareness of jurisdictions outside of us, some things might have to go to the county and maybe you interface more with the county than than someone who's trying to get a project off the ground. So just having that kind of thought in your mind and development conversations that, you know, tourism can provide a perspective and insight on those development projects. Tourism is a long game and I think I've stated a couple of times, due to a couple significant factors, we're a little bit of an underdog. We don't have the beach boardwalk. We don't have Bixby Bridge. We, you know, leisure travel isn't something that's already happening organically. We are driving that and we are trying to develop that because that's what complements the assets that we have. We also have to be authentic to what Morgan Hill is. So we can't promise something in marketing and then have someone come and not experience those things. So but the funding here is is again, one of one of our challenges. Because trying to launch this and get Morgan Hill recognized and get people traveling here, you know, those reviews come from people who have traveled here. And we're not, you know, a hotspot as it is. So we are trying to generate something. We are being very intentional, which is better in the long run because the tourism isn't just developing into something that's destructive for the community.
Krista, can I get get you to respond to me in very direct terms? What do you need from us?
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for her, looking for her to just say, accept and file a report?
It could be. It could be. What you're saying is what I'm hearing you say is that there's some financial component here. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, just awareness, awareness of that.
Very good. Okay, I didn't know if there was something else. I just, okay, very good. You've already, you've already, okay, Councilmember Lebers, please go right ahead.
Hi, thank you. Very good report, very good. Many reports are not fun to do, so you did a good job. But I want to ask you just a question. Have you, as the tourism for our city, reached out to our major employers such as Enritsu and Shu Palace for when they bring people in? What we can offer in the city besides just coming for a business meeting, you know, staying in one of our hotels and stuff? Have you made that reach?
It has been in our strategy. I have not yet gotten to it, but it's been one of the things in our business development strategy that is as things have opened up and my workload ebbs and flows, that's really like a sales manager, business development department person would do. So it's it's on our list, yes.
Okay, good. I think that's a really good idea. If you can work it into your schedule is, you know, drop by, not just once, you know, a couple of times. And, you know, so you're a familiar face and they realize, yes, they could probably have a huge sales conference here or something like that. And that's but not only have their meeting, there's more to do in Morgan Hill. So that I think would tie it all together. So
Absolutely.
You know, think about that for your next work plan as, you know, part of your days. If you can cram anymore in, but I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Krista, for your report. I'm, I have a couple of questions, but one I wanted to ask first. You talked about the click rate of nine point six CTR. Is that the email campaign or is that, okay?
Yeah, clicking something in the email.
Right, no, I'm I'm familiar with that. We have that for our boutique. And so, you know, I know what our point is, what we're trying to get. I'm wondering, what is, what is our point? Our goal to get at? What have we set as our goal?
I haven't set a goal for that specifically. When I'm looking at, I'm trying to look more high level at all of these marketing things working together. But I do think that these funnel to our website. That's kind of where the website or the email newsletters linking to our website, our social media, we hope people migrate over to our website. So I do look at our website numbers and I want to see those grow. But we're we're not super specific on the email newsletter.
Okay, if we're, because I know we've got, we probably have to pay for a subscription to have that, so maybe just, and we could talk offline, but just, you know, coming up with some maybe a goal that we want to try and get it up to as far as like looking at the standards of what's a really good one and what's, you know, a strong one. But that's fine. The other thing I want to ask you about was when you talked about leisure and and coming to Morgan Hill. And you say we're starting from ground zero. And rather than the business travel, it sounds like we're trying to get people to come from here. We, you know, have, I know that I've mentioned this to you before, but RVs and and looking at people just going from the for the weekends. And I know that we will often go to central California down there and kind of take these weekend trips and, you know, drive around and stay there and just kind of explore and check things out in a new little city. And I think we have something very similar to what central California, I think you're pretty familiar with it there, has to offer. So what are we doing around that space? You know, are we doing anything with RVs, with camping, with glamping, with, you know, when we go, we'll go and visit wineries, take a bike ride, go eat breakfast, dinner. So I'm just wondering if that is playing into this strategy.
It is in an indirect way. So we're funded by the lodging that has four walls and a room and a locking door. And so RVs don't quite fall in our assessment. So we aren't actively, you know, pushing that forward in our marketing messaging. However, all of our resources are available for anyone that wants to look up where to eat, where to go, if visit Morgan Hill resources. And it's not about our website. It's about what's on our website. If someone is searching for something and our website is ranking up high when they say restaurants near me or restaurants for dogs or whatever they're looking for, then we're we're getting that supporting the whole ecosystem of tourism and spend. But actively going after that is kind of in conflict with the representing the hotels and getting people to stay in hotels.
Okay, I mean, I would encourage you to do that because, you know, even when if people are taking a trailer or if they're taking an RV, often we will stay in hotels because you will sometimes want to just have those comforts, you know, or maybe you want to break up trips or whatever it is. So that might be even a great way to advertise us to be like a stop, you know, come and stop in and kind of take a little break from your road trip or whatever. But anyway, that was something I wanted to talk about. I wanted to see. I wrote in highlighter, so it's kind of hard for me to see. If you, if you could kind of, and and I guess maybe this is similar to what my colleagues, set us up for what it is that you're hoping that we might be able to do financially coming forward. Give us a hint.
That is not quite what we're here to talk about yet. I I think that we are in the throes of renewing our T bid right now and it's a very involved process. I do think that we need to move through that before we can really seriously talk about what I might need from council in terms of supporting Visit Morgan Hill.
Okay, then let me ask you this. Where, where do we need more support? So that you can accomplish the strategy that you're trying to do?
There's a few areas. Financial support could augment our overall budget. And if you looked at the district plan, there's a pie chart of of how our budget is allocated. So we have seventy percent sales and marketing, fourteen percent admin and operations, eleven percent sports and and facility marketing. So any contribution augments all of those. And having, having support, um, another person. Would help immensely. Um, there's a lot that could be accomplished, whether it is a. Virtual assistant or a hired contractor, having those funds to do that. Um, would be very helpful and help us accomplish a lot more and get onto a bit more even playing field.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, very good. Christina.
Yes, I'm going to ask our assistant city manager Edith to make closing remarks.
Closing remarks and brief. Uh, thank you, Krista. I appreciate it. Uh, thank you, Krista. I think that as a board member on your behalf, Chris and I sit on the board. With to support Krista on our agenda for Visit Morgan Hill. So thank you for the comments and the feedback today. I want to be a little bit more sort of answer the question of what do you need? What does Visit Morgan Hill need from you? Uh, very specifically, first and foremost. Um, this, over the next month, we're going to be bringing to you the renewal of the T bid. That looks at a horizon of ten years. It is different than the first one. And it also looks at a potential increase above the existing one and a half. This is something that you, the council, when Visit Morgan Hill is ready to increase the T bid. It will come to you as well. Every year, uh, the T bid exists because of your approval that happens every year. So first and foremost, at the highest level is your support for the expansion of the renewal of the T bid. Krista, as our executive director, has the authority and the direction to come to you and speak. On behalf of the Visit Morgan Hill Board, when items come to you that impact our tourism agenda. So if you have an item that might expand the portfolio, whether it is adding recreational facilities. Enhance enhancing entertainment options, enhancing downtown, improving lodging opportunities. And you have an opportunity to vote on those items. Uh, and you're balancing many aspects of the community feedback. Krista will be the voice of Visit Morgan Hill to to kind of tip the scales on that behalf. So she will be coming to you um as as those opportunities arise. Thank you.
Thank you. And quite frankly, I'd like, I'd rather see you quarterly than annually. And so I think we're going to probably work on that. So, but thank you. Great report. Really, you did an outstanding job. Thanks so much. Okay, we're going to move to future council initiated agenda items. Do we have any?
So I mentioned this earlier.
Yes.
Uh, to revise that policy relative to nonprofits.
And we say to review policy CP twenty one dash zero two, city council funding requests.
Thank you. I know I can depend on you to be precise.
Thank you. I've also got two items, one being funding, a funding mechanism for public art. And number two, prioritization of youth sports and recreation tourism. And of course, we need to submit, you'll submit something in writing within. To uh, to the city manager based on that item.
Sure.
And and I will, I will as well. Otherwise, they don't get the opportunity to come back. I'm sorry, council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have two future agenda items and one is I would like to ask if we could get the funding application in Spanish. And then the second one is I'd like to see if we could bring back the economic blueprint. And um, look at our tourism piece within that.
Quickly on the, on the application, that doesn't need to be a review. I mean, that that's a great request. I don't think it needs to come before the council. Can we just, can we just make that happen?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Even better.
Yeah.
I like saved me some writing.
Exactly. That's right. Good. Thank you for that.
And then bringing back the economic development blueprint, like and or just specifically on tourism. I would like to definitely focus on tourism, but I'd like to look at economic blueprint and I think we need to put more focus on tourism.
Council member, council member Martinez Beltran, could you, would you be willing, because I I agree, I think we should, we should look at that. Could we make that an item that we would do for our annual? Goal setting. I think that's, that's the perfect time to really take a deep dive on.
Yeah, I think what's coming up.
Yeah, exactly.
First week, first week of February.
Right. Then she doesn't even have to submit anything in writing. Look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you need to write one for me. You'll write. If that's, if that's acceptable, then we'll, we'll take it.
Do you want to have, do, do we have a conversation on it though now, especially since we're doing, I I'm sorry, Mayor, but I'm thinking about it. We're going to be looking and having the T bid coming back. So I think it's important that we do it more timely. We can certainly dive in more in January. But because of that, I think we need to. Need to do that.
Comment there.
And I'm happy to write something.
Yes.
Teresa, I wonder. Absolutely. Again, that that could be something as well that we could do at the annual goal setting is. The prioritization of the youth sports and recreation tourism. Yeah, okay. And then we'll even do a deeper dive on the on the blueprint, but in the meantime, we'll come back with something based on what you submit in writing.
We're gonna dive.
We're gonna dive, baby. All right. I think we have done our best to extend this as long as we can. So with that. Meeting is adjourned.
I just want to go on here for Kate.
Yes.